Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council. It is Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is William Lutz, President of Council, and you're in Council Chambers. I will lead us in the invocation this evening, and then we have a scout that will come up and help us with the pledge. And so, Henry, I'll call you up when we're ready, but this time, will you please stand in Bowyer House?
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day, and we are all grateful for this wonderful community that we get to call home. Lord, at this holiday season, help us to be kind and gentle and generous with each and every person that we may interact with, Lord. Lord, we also ask for your blessing on all of those employees here within the city that keep this community running and functioning very well, including our police officers and our firefighters. Lord, we also ask that you give us wisdom, courage, and conviction to take care of the least and the last and the lost among us each and every day. Amen.
Amen.
Henry, if you will please come forward and lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance today.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Henry, and you and your father are more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting if you wish. This time, we'll have Mrs. Knight, please call roll.
May I pause a moment? Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Twist? Mr. Witten?
It has been moved to excuse Mr. Twist.
Second.
It has been moved to excuse Mr. Twist by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist is excused.
Moved to excuse Mr. Witten.
Second.
It has been moved to excuse Mr. Witten by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Witten is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. At this time, we have a presentation to our city auditor, Mr. Friggy, to be given by Mr. Joe Braden of the State Auditorial. Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. It's my honor tonight to be here on behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber to present the City of Troy the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. This award puts the City of Troy in a very select group. The Auditor of State's office audits approximately six thousand entities, and less than four percent are even eligible for this award. The Auditor of State Award with Distinction is presented to local governments and school districts upon the completion of a financial audit that meets the following criteria of a clean audit report. I like to read through this criteria so everyone knows what it took John's office and everybody to make this happen, so bear with me here just a minute. The entity must first file a financial report with our office, the Auditor of State's office, by the statutory due date without extension on a GAAP handling basis and prepare an annual comprehensive financial report. The audit report must not contain any findings for recoveries or any material citations, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, any uniform guidance, findings, or any questioned costs. The entity's management letter must contain no comments related to any ethics referrals, any question costs less than the threshold per uniform guidance, any lack of timely annual financial report submissions, any bank reconciliation issues, a failure to obtain a timely single audit in accordance with uniform guidance, any findings for recovery, or any public meetings or public records issues. And the entity shall have no other financial or any other type concerns. This award represents the hard work of all your city employees here at the City of Troy and all the financial staff who each day make an effort to attain accounting excellence. I want to recognize all the council members, I want to recognize the mayor, your Director of Public Safety and Service, and all of them that have done an outstanding job here in the City of Troy watching over every single dollar. But I specifically would like to recognize John Friggy. If you'd like to step down here, John. Your city auditor. John's leadership professionalism and his exceptional commitment to fiscal integrity. Congratulations. On behalf of Ohio Auditor of State Keith Faber, I would like to present the Ohio Auditor of State Award with Distinction. Thanks, City of Troy. Congratulations.
Joe? Let me take a picture of this guy.
Want a picture? Okay. Put that away real quick. Do it like this, shake your hands.
Okay, one of those will work.
All right. Congratulations there, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Congratulations, Mr. Friggy. Thank you to you and your team, and thank you, Mr. Braden, for being here this evening.
Well done, well done. Thank you, brother.
We'll move on to the summary minutes of the last meeting of Troy City Council. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the minutes?
Minutes of Council, December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Public hearings were held on ordinances number oh fifty-one and oh fifty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, both rezonings. Council then recessed into executive session and then returned from executive session. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that ordinance number oh forty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three, a rezoning be adopted. Law and Ordinance Committee recommended that legislation be prepared establishing a moratorium on the granting of any permits allowing adult-use cannabis operators from establishing within the City of Troy. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing memorandum of understanding with the Troy schools. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared advertising forbids for the North Elm Street resurfacing project. Resolution number R sixty-three, two thousand and twenty-three. Contract for the North Elm Street resurfacing was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R sixty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. Memorandum of understanding with Troy schools was given first reading. Resolution number R sixty-five, two thousand and twenty-three. Authorizing settlement agreement was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number oh forty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three, a rezoning part of the Hugel Eisner Annexation was given third reading and was adopted. Ordinance number oh fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, a rezoning of the Swank Annexation on Fenner Road was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number oh fifty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. A rezoning of property on West Main Street was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number oh fifty-three, two thousand and twenty-three. Appropriating funds for two thousand and twenty-four adoption of the budget was given second reading and was adopted. Ordinance number oh fifty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. Moratorium on permits allowing adult-use cannabis operators from establishing within the city was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number oh fifty-five, two thousand and twenty-three. A reappropriation associated with two thousand and twenty-three funds was given first reading and was adopted, following various comments, Council adjourned at eight twenty-two p.m.
How is Council wishing to suspend the minutes this evening?
I motion to accept and approve the minutes as read.
It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We move on to committee reports. We have eleven reports from five committees this evening. We'll begin with the first two reports from the Buildings Committee and Mrs. Marshall.
This committee met on December eleventh to consider an amendment and extension to the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Troy and the City of Dayton that would continue the process of Troy purchasing reclaimed pebble lime from the City of Dayton and Dayton removing the lime sludge residual from the city's lagoons to use in their re-kiln-ing process. The new agreement will include a thirty-four percent cost adjustment for two thousand and twenty-four with the costs adjusted through the new contract period. The cost of this agreement continues to be less than the city purchasing the needed supply of lime from a contractor and the cost of a contractor cleaning the lime lagoons. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an amendment and extension to the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Dayton and the City of Troy for bulk pebble lime for the water treatment plant, so that the new agreement can be in place for the beginning of the year when the current agreement expires. This committee supports emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted from Mr. Twist, Mr. Witten, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mrs. Marshall, please continue.
This committee met on December eleventh to consider an amendment to the current professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer related to the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. This additional design work would then result in adding the designed Raz-Waz pump replacement to the plant expansion contract with added work remaining under the council authorization for the plant expansion and being included in the funding secured for the project. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an amendment to the professional service agreement with Hazen and Sawyer of Cincinnati, Ohio, to include design services for the Raz-Waz pump replacement and sludge holding tank blower and pump replacement at the wastewater treatment plant, at an additional cost of four hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, for a total not to exceed design costs of one million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, and to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any necessary agreements for funding of the design and construction of this project, so that this agreement amendment can be executed to be encumbered for from two thousand and twenty-three budget savings. Committee supports emergency legislation on this as well. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Twist, Mr. Witten, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Are there any comments or questions on this report?
I have one.
Mr. Pierce?
I just want clarification for public to know what Raz-Waz is.
Mr. Tinnerton?
Certainly, that is return-activated sludge pump and waste-activated sludge pump.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tinnerton. We will move on to the Community and Economic Development Committee with four reports with Mr. Schilling.
Thank you very much. In no special order, we, on December eleventh, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that this council consider revision to the guidelines for residential exterior housing improvements revolving loan fund to set a fixed rate of two percent to option two in order to provide a low-interest option to qualifying applicants for the program. This committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee and recommends that the legislation be prepared to approve the proposed guidelines revisions to the residential exterior housing improvement revolving loan fund to provide a low-interest option to applicants for this program, and this was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please continue.
Okay. This is the, maybe I should have read the, should I have read the ordinance on that first one? Doesn't make any difference, okay. Okay, well, this is ordinance number oh fifty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, rezoning of one three oh four West Main Street, Troy, Ohio, parcel number D oh eight oh nine six one hundred, from R four Single Family Residential District to O R one Office Residential District. This committee met December eleventh to review the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that thirteen oh four West Main Street, parcel number D oh eight oh nine six one hundred, be rezoned from R four Single Family Residential District to O R one Office Residential District. It is a recommendation of this committee that council adopt ordinance number oh fifty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, the rezoning of thirteen oh four West Main Street from R four to O R one, as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission and based on the findings of staff stated in the detailed report, and this was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please continue.
Okay, this third report revolves around an ordinance number oh five one, two thousand and twenty-three, rezoning of a parcel Swank Annex, Annexation, two nine eight oh West Fenner Road from County A two General Agriculture to City R four Single Family Residential District. This committee met on December eleventh to review the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that fifty-two point nine five five acres of the Swank Annexation located at two nine eight oh West Fenner Road be rezoned from the county zoning of A two General Agriculture to the city zoned of R four Single Family Residential District. A public hearing was held December fourth at which no comments were received on the proposed rezoning. It is a recommendation of the undersigned that the council adopt ordinance number oh fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, the rezoning of a total of fifty-two point nine five five acres of the Swank Annexation, in lot one one five six twenty point oh seven, excuse me, twenty point oh one seven acres from in lot one one five six one, in lot, also in lot one five, let's try to put this better there again, in lot one one five six one, twenty-two point nine three one acres, and in lot one one five six two, ten point zero zero seven acres, located at twenty-nine eight oh West Fenner Road from the county zoning of A two General Agriculture to the city zoning of R four Single Family Residential District as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission and based on the findings of staff stated in the detailed report. This is signed, recommended, respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce and Mrs. Snee. I filed a minority report on this, as I recommend that committee, that council not adopt the ordinance number oh fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-three to rezone the property to R four under traditional zoning and rather the property rezoned to the city agricultural residential A R zoning. The reason for this was essentially that we were trying to follow what we did with Somerset.
Let's finish your thing.
Okay, I was respectfully submitted by myself.
Are there any comments on the report, Mr. Schilling?
Thank you. We'll get it. The, again, I filed a minority report with the feeling that we had to give this some consideration as we did the Somerset, and talking with the Oda Administration, I am under the assumption now that we are trying to follow, we would like to follow the same types of requirements that we placed on Somerset as far as infrastructure, make sure the curb sidewalks, this type of thing are taken care of. This is approximately the same size as the Somerset at over fifty acres. You know, it's going to be close to a fifty million dollar project, and I think that the developer can, as was with the Somerset, you know, take care of some of the infrastructure needs, even though that right now there's no other properties, there are very few properties from the city out in that, along Fenner Road. I go back to my own subdivision twenty-five years ago and when, again, the same thing, there was nothing along Washington Road at that particular time and decayed, and the, yet, our subdivision required to put in sidewalks and curbs, fill in the drainage ditches, you know, that type of thing. And again, over the years, it's sort of been hit or miss, is my belief that we need to build infrastructure as we bring properties into the city, and I would like to see that, I hope this attitude would continue on with the subdivision as well. The idea that a subdivision developer can't afford these types of things simply tells me that they shouldn't be building the subdivision, if that's what your argument is. So again, I, at this time, I'd probably remove my recommendation and support Mr. Pierce and Mrs. Snee on this, but again, I would, we're going to have to approach this with some caution, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any other comments or questions on the report?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Snee?
I just wanted to clarify, as I think we did at the committee meeting, forward for this subdivision, the developers will be required to meet all subdivision requirements as would any subdivision coming into the city. Is that correct, Mr. Tinnerton?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And did Washington Reserve meet all the requirements coming into the city? The curbs and sidewalks and the extra lane of traffic and that type of thing?
Well, they went through the same process, so.
Did they meet, did they meet those requirements?
I mean, I have to look at the details. It's been a number of years, but.
Washington Reserve was done two years ago, three years ago.
Okay.
And there are no curbs, no sidewalks, no extra lane of traffic. You know, so my, again, it's, my hope is, is that we can, you know, follow the standards, but sometimes, for some reason, those types of things, I guess, are overlooked. I'm not sure.
It's not that they're overlooked, it's whether or not they make sense logically to do them in that particular case in that particular area. Each one is taken separately, and it's between the staff and the planning commission as well as the council. It's all taken into consideration when the development is proposed.
And that's why it took forty-five years to develop Stanfield Road? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling.
Do we have one more?
Yes, you have one more report on the small business development revolving loan fund.
Okay, thank you so much. Again, on December eleventh, the committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that council consider revisions to the guidelines for both small business development, SPD revolving loan fund, and the Community Development Block Grant Economic Development revolving loan fund, CBDGEDRLF, okay? That would provide, did you want to ask what that means? Okay, thank you. That would provide for low-interest assistance for future applications to the program. Information regarding the proposed interest rates is in the detailed report. It is a recommendation of this committee, support the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee, and recommends that legislation be prepared to approve the proposed revised guidelines for both the Small Business Revolving Loan Fund and the Community Development Block Grant Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund to provide for low-interest options. This was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, move on to Finance Committee with three reports, and Mr. Seaver?
Thank you, President Lutz. The first report deals ironically with a CDBGEDRF loan. On December eleventh, the committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that council approve a modification to the Community Development Block Grant Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund loan to A M Scott Distillery LLC. This will offset an agreement that the city not pay utility bills associated with the public restroom located at nine West Main Street. The committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee and recommends that legislation be prepared to modify the CDBGEDRF loan to A M Scott Distillery LLC to waive the final two payments to the city due in two thousand and thirty, with the city not paying utility bills associated with the public restroom located at nine West Main Street for a period of fifty years. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Rozell, and myself as chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please continue.
The next agreement, or the next committee report is for compensation for non-bargaining unit positions. This committee met December fourteenth to review the recently completed compensation study for non-bargaining unit positions. It is a recommendation that, to this, of this committee, the legislation be prepared authorizing, adjusting the two thousand and twenty-four wages of non-bargaining unit employees retroactive to January first, two thousand and twenty-four, to implement the new fourteen-step pay range and the additional two percent adjustments. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Rozell, and myself as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mr. Pierce?
I'll have the question of how many staff would be affected by that? How many non-bargaining positions do we have?
You want an exact number, or, I mean, it affects.
I'll go for a roundabout.
Oh, I would say approximately a hundred.
All right, and I'm not proposing more roundabouts just because I use that term.
I understand.
The only thing I would point out is, it may seem a little odd to say it retroactive to January first, two thousand and twenty-four, when we're doing this on December eighteenth. All legislation and non-emergency legislation has to pin for thirty days, so it would not become effective until January seventeenth, give or take, and so that's the purpose of the retroactivity language in the, is that correct, Mr. Tinnerton?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Seaver, please continue with your final report.
The final report I am actually recusing myself from as I am the, well, I'm involved with the applicant, so I will defer to Mr. Phillips, who's going to read this report.
Okay, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee members Phillips and Rozell met on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to consider authorizing a professional services agreement with the Manic and Smith Group, Inc. of Maumee, Ohio, related to the assessment and remediation of the abandoned gas station grant implementation for one hundred West Market Street. The work is covered by a grant for the project. Chairman Seaver recused himself from this meeting to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest, and it was the recommendation, excuse me, of the committee members Phillips and Rozell that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a professional services agreement with the Manic and Smith Group, Inc. of Maumee, Ohio, to provide services for the assessment and remediation for the abandoned gas station cleanup grant implementation for the property at one hundred West Market Street at a total cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Seaver, and myself as a member of that committee.
Any comments or questions on that report? Seeing none, move over to the Law and Ordinance Committee, and Mrs. Snee with one report.
Thank you, Mr. President. On December eleventh, this committee met to consider amendments required to Chapter one seventy-one of the codified ordinances municipal income tax to comply with changes to municipal income tax provisions included in adopted House Bill thirty-three, the state budget bill. A summary of the major provisions is attached. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared amending Chapter one seventy-one of the codified ordinances to comply with municipal income tax provisions included in HB thirty-three, so that the provisions are effective January four for the two thousand and twenty-three tax year. This committee supports emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move to the last report of the evening in the Recreation and Parks Committee, and standing in for Mr. Witten, Mr. Rozell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee members Rozell and Witten met on December fourteenth to consider a professional services agreement with Burgess and Neifel Incorporated of Columbus, Ohio, to perform design and construction management services associated with the removal of the Lower Head Dam and other river improvements. The city has recently, the city was recently notified of an approval of a six million, nine hundred, nine hundred and ninety thousand dollar grant for the project construction, and a grant application has also been submitted to M B R P C for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to assist with recreational portion of the project construction. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, excuse me, authorizing Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a professional services agreement with Burgess and Neifel Incorporated of Columbus, Ohio, to perform design and construction services associated with the removal of the Low Head Dam and other river improvements at a cost not to exceed one million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars, so that the agreement can be encumbered for the two hundred and twenty, two thousand and twenty-three appropriations. The committee supports emergency legislation. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Witten as chairman, Jeff Schilling, and myself.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Any comments or questions on that report?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
I wasn't here on, I was out of town on Thursday when this committee met, and my, so I have one question on the, the way I read the information that's provided to council, the planning that we're going to be paying for will also cover the planning needed to cover the city's project to essentially build that river water, the paving from. the city's project to essentially build that river walk or the paving from the new entryway at Crawford Street all the way down into Treasure Island. Would that be a fair assumption on that?
Yeah, that'll all be included in this, yes.
Okay, and did I read that right, that now the ODA administration is looking at putting a access point so that this trail actually has a access to the downtown?
We have asked the design engineer to include one of three or four different options on the west side of Market Street, north of Water Street, to see which access point would work.
Great, because when it was originally talked about several weeks ago, and I think it was in committee or something, there was no access point that was, that was to be done at some future point in time, and so we now are, the city is now looking at, looking at access point. That's wonderful. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any other comments or questions on the report? Seeing none, we will open up for citizen comments on agenda items or committee reports. We had eleven committee reports. We have eight resolutions and five ordinances. If you wish to address council on any of those items, you are welcome to come to the podium, give your name and address. You have two minutes to address council. Seeing none, we'll move right into resolutions. While Mrs. Knight read the first resolution of the evening, Resolution R. sixty-four, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R. sixty-four, twenty twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety and the President of the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a memorandum of understanding of the Troy City Schools regarding future educational and recreational opportunities for residents within the Troy City School District and declaring an emergency. This has been recommended by the Board of Park Commissioners. This is the second reading.
House Counsel wished out.
Move for suspension.
Second. It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Do I need to abstain from this one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I will abstain from this vote for possible conflict of interest due to the fact that I work for Troy City Schools.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead, and I will abstain from this due to a conflict of interest because I work for Troy City Schools. Mr. Pierce?
Well, for abstaining, my wife works for Troy City Schools.
I don't think that's fair.
Yeah.
The motion does not, the suspension of the three reading rule is not sustained, and motion fails. This will be held over for a third reading at our next meeting.
I have a question on that, then.
You have a question?
Yes, I have a question.
Mr. Rozell?
Due to being held over, are we going to have the same issue next time around if we got four people abstaining?
We don't need a supermajority to adopt a resolution on the third reading.
I mean, even approving it.
We need five votes.
Yeah. Moving on, Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution, Resolution R. sixty-six, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R. sixty-six, twenty twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a second amendment to the agreement for professional services with Hazen and Sawyer for the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant and to execute agreements related to the funding of the plant's expansion design and construction project and declaring an emergency. This will increase the total design cost to one million, six-hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, and this is the first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead, yes. Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes. Moved to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mrs. Snead. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R. sixty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R. sixty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Resolution amending Resolution number R. thirty-nine, twenty twenty-one, to revise the guidelines for the residential exterior housing improvement revolving loan program. This was recommended for approval by the Loan Review Committee. This is the first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snead. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead, yes. Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead, yes. Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R. sixty-eight, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R. sixty-eight, twenty twenty-three. Resolution amending Resolution number R. nineteen, twenty twenty-two, to revise the guidelines for the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund, and amending Resolution number R. thirteen oh one, to include the revolving loan guidelines for the CDBG Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund. This has also been recommended by the Loan Review Committee. First reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snead, yes. Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mrs. Snead, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R. sixty-nine, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R. sixty-nine, twenty twenty-three. Resolution amending loan repayment conditions of AM Scott Distillery LLC for the loan from the CDBG Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund. This was reported on this evening. It will actually waive the last two payments in lieu of utility fees that will not be paid for nine West Main Street. First reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mrs. Snead. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R. seventy, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R. seventy, twenty twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Burgess and Neifel, Inc. of Columbus, Ohio, for the design of the low-head dam and river improvement project and declaring an emergency. This would be for the cost not to exceed of one million, two-hundred sixteen thousand, six-hundred and thirty-four dollars. First reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
And, Mrs. Knight, will you please read the final resolution of the evening, Resolution R. seventy-one, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R. seventy-one, twenty twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a professional services agreement with the Manick and Smith Group, Inc. of Maumee, Ohio, for environmental services for the investigation and cleanup of the abandoned gas station property at one hundred West Market Street, Troy, Ohio. The cost of the project is two-hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is totally reimbursed by a grant. First reading.
Move for suspension. Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Due to professional relationship with the current tenant, I need to recuse myself for this and the subsequent vote that passes suspension.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
The item fails to have the requisite number of votes for suspension, so this will be laid over for a reading.
Ah, sorry, sorry.
We'll move on to ordinances now. We'll have Mrs. Knight, please read the first ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O. fifty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Ordinance number O. fifty-one, twenty twenty-three. An ordinance changing the zoning of in-lot numbers one-one-five-six-oh, one-one-five-six-one, and one-one-five-six-two, in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the Miami County zoning of A-two General Agriculture to the city zoning of R-four, single-family residence district. This is part of the SWINK annexation. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. Third reading.
Move for adoption. Second.
Yours has been moved for adoption by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O. fifty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Ordinance number O. fifty-two, twenty twenty-three. An ordinance changing the zoning of parcel number D-oh-eight-oh-nine-six-one-oh-oh in the city of Troy, Ohio, from R-four, single-family residential district, to O-R-one, office residence district. This is located at thirteen oh-four West Main Street, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the third reading. Move to adopt.
It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mrs. Snead, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Due to professional relationship with the applicant, I need to recuse myself.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O. fifty-six, twenty twenty-three.
Ordinance number O. fifty-six, twenty twenty-three. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a first amendment and extension to the intergovernmental agreement regarding the purchase of lime from the city of Dayton, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading for this new renewal of the agreement.
Move to suspend. Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Ordin, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O. fifty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
Ordinance number O. fifty-seven, twenty twenty-three. An ordinance amending Chapter one seventy-one of the City of Troy, Ohio Codified Ordinances Regarding Municipal Income Tax and Declaring an Emergency. This updates the Troy Code to comply with House Bill thirty-three, the House Budget Bill, and this is the first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mrs. Snead, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O fifty-eight, twenty-three?
Ordinance number O fifty-eight, twenty-twenty-three. Ordinance fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the city of Troy, Ohio. This is regarding non-bargain unit employees of the city. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We have come to the end of our legislative session. We are now ready for a presentation by Mr. Shane Carter. I see Mr. Carter in the audience. Mr. Carter, if you would please come forward and tell us all of the wonderful things happening at the Lincoln Community Center this evening.
Good evening, everybody. First, thanks for having me, and happy holidays, everybody. I wanted to kind of give an update to council as well as everybody who was listening on the Lincoln Center. We're very fortunate, naturally, to be here in the city of Troy. Everybody knows our history, knows we've been here for a long time. Started in eighteen sixty-five as a one-room schoolhouse, and we're very proud of our legacy that we've left, not only in the community, but the alumni, I'll call them that, over the last twelve to thirteen years, that we've worked hard to try and put out as a good product here from our community center. Couple of things I wanted to highlight here. Most importantly for us, obviously, we focus on youth, so it's important that folks know what we do as far as our after-school tutoring program, what we do with our, we have an opportunity school with Miami County Educational Services, in which suspending expelled kids throughout the districts in Miami County. The districts were able to buy seats through Miami County ESC, and that's something I work with, with Dave Larson the last three years, so we've been the, kind of the pilot, last year was a pilot year, this is the second year. I think we're really changing and impacting young people's lives in that we're working hard to get them back into their school district. A lot of the specials that we provide are actually our staff, so wood carving, we offer some things at our community garden, our farmer's market, as well as some gym classes, and then do a lot of things as far as with the arts. So, we're very proud of that. They rent leased space from us, and there's about fifteen seats that are available for kids throughout the county, so that's one thing we're very proud of. Something that's new over the last year and a half is our partnership with Dayton Children's, so we have a mental and behavioral health specialist on staff thirty hours a week. Olivia is the lady that takes care of that currently, but we're grateful that we think that partnership has really benefited our children and both our staff and our parents. We learned through a baseline study here in the first eight weeks of school that approximately about forty percent of our children were either on IEPs or 504 plans or had special needs. And so what we want to be able to do is after school, provide that support that realistically, we don't have a staff member license on staff to be able to provide that support. So that's been very important for us. We've seen a lot of successes with that, both through the intake process of the parents and the children being able to work together with somebody that has that type of licensing, but then also the feedback that we're receiving from Olivia and Dayton Children's. So, I'm excited, I know the day after Christmas, we kind of have our year wrap-up review meeting with Ben Goodstein and his team, so excited to see how we can grow that partnership, knowing that Children's does, their footprint is bigger south of seventy, I'd say, and we know that pediatric care is very important, and anybody that, you know, has looked into that, it's something that's very important here in our community. I'd be remiss to not speak on our seniors in terms of the program that we offer for our senior citizens. They believe that they own the building, they're very passionate about giving me feedback, so I'm very hesitant sometimes to ask them how they're doing, but just to say hello and good day. They do give us awesome feedback, whether if it's the temperature of the pool. We do take pride in keeping the building clean, so I don't get a lot of negative feedback on that, but when asked, they do give us honest feedback, and a lot of them have been, I speak to even like Mrs. Charette, who's still there, you know, her husband was the director from nineteen sixty-two to nineteen seventy-one, so she has sixty years of her own feedback, if you will, well, fifty years, I'd say, but she's very, someone that's definitely a patriot of our community center, who knows a lot of the history. But the list goes on, as far as, we believe we probably have approximately about three to four hundred senior citizen members, and our center has changed, in that at one time, as you guys know, it was a neighborhood center. I would say that our members, we became kind of a regional hub. I know that we have members from as far west over as New Carlyle and Springfield, as far north as like around Annan, up even into like Baccans and places, areas like that, Greenville, over in Darkanum, and then as far south is over in like down into Van Delia, and even some clients that come from the Brookville area, and either further south and over to the west. So, with our recent expansion, which we're very grateful for, and we couldn't have done without the city, we really feel like we've really turned into what I call a neighborhood community center to a place that's really became a hub, not only for the community, but for the county and even outside of our county. I'm very, we're very fortunate to have this center, and I think for you guys that have traveled to other cities like size of Troy, there's not many community centers left in America. And I'll take one area, for example, the city of Dayton, I grew up playing at the Westwood Center, the Dakota Center, the Baumberg Center. There were probably four or five other ones that I went to as a young kid, and many of them now are just closed or have turned into different arenas, if you will. And I think based on the slide that I've seen, both academically and from a cognitive skill ability of our youth, COVID hurt us because the development definitely for our children was paused, and a lot of the at-home things that parents relied upon to do just didn't happen. So, one of my colleagues and somebody I look up to, Ruth Scott, who does our educational coordination at the center, she always tells me, she says, Shane, we're fighting to be able to close that gap. And the gap that she's talking about is that academically, a lot of our kids were already performing at or below the level that they needed to be, and then, you know, COVID came and a lot, we were sent home, and the gap just got wider. So we've worked very hard at being able to support them, not only after school, but throughout the summer, providing not only tutors, but other people that specialize in things they may need. One of the things I want to highlight in my presentation is the opportunity to come and volunteer. I know Mayor Otis coming down to read to the kids, I see you're on the calendar next year, this upcoming year, which is awesome. But I would encourage all you guys, if you have any time, whether if it's during the school year, in the summer, whatever that looks like, one hour can make a huge difference and impact on our children. I'm definitely a product of the Lincoln Center, and the person that took time with me was Harold Hughes, and he spent thirty-three years there, and there was never a time where he acted like he was too busy to take time with me. And many times when my father wasn't around, or when I needed a positive role model, he was that guy. So, just know that you guys can make an impact, whether if it's an hour a week, an hour a month, coming down once a quarter. We have lots of special events, which I know you guys are probably aware of, but from our Thanksgiving feast, in which this year, we know we fed like between four hundred and eighty and probably five hundred and twenty people easily. We have a huge holiday party coming up, which will be this Wednesday for our kids, in conjunction with UVMC and Premier Health, in which we do an Angel Tree Party, and the kids, they get out early, so it'll kind of be like organized chaos for about four hours. But from around one-thirty to five-thirty on Wednesday, we have a huge program planned for them, we're really excited about. So there's a huge opportunity to get involved and volunteer. Also working with Patrick on trying to see what it would look like to be able to offer some type of workout or opportunity for city staff to go to come and use the center. I see from eleven to two that we have kind of a, I call it a quiet time. Pickleball goes from around nine to eleven, as well as water aerobics in our infant swim rescue class. And from eleven to two, we have some folks that come down for the lunch hour, but I'd really like to see if we could be able to provide an opportunity for city staff to get in. We don't budget, from a revenue standpoint, that memberships are going to offset our expenses. It's just, as affordable as we are, it's one of our core values. I don't know that we'll ever be able to say that, hey, the Lincoln Center is going to be profitable or cover all of expenses through memberships, so we want to keep that affordable. We have in our bylaws, and I'm proud of our board for voting this in, that anybody twenty-one and under is free to use our facility. And as of January thirty-first, our price will go from ten dollars a month, which it's been for these, all the twelve years I've been there, to two hundred dollars a year, or if you're paying by the month, twenty dollars a month. We still think it's the best value for a facility, I mean, in this area. We've priced it from the Crocs Center to your local YMCA's, your Boys and Girls Clubs, your Planet Fitnesses, your local gyms, and we feel like for forty thousand square feet, a pool, two different basketball hoops, or courts, I'm sorry, walking track, computer lab, art studio, all the other amenities that are there, the computer lab, that's really a great value. A couple of things I'll highlight on, we have pickleball daily, which goes from nine to eleven in both gymnasiums. We have our infant swim rescue class, which I talked about, which we think is very much so a survival skill that we're offering to young folks that Megan Baker teaches. Mary Borton offers a yoga class, and then as we go into this new year, and everybody has their New Year's resolutions, I'll offer that Julio Herrera is one of the, I'd say, the most skilled trainers I've ever seen in my life. I've worked with him both in the track arena, football, even from a physical therapy standpoint. I know Todd has worked out with him for the last four or five months, I've seen you in the gym there. So, we do have that opportunity, something to look forward to on your calendars. We always obviously celebrate Black History Month, and that our roots run back to the emancipation, and Abraham Lincoln is who we were founded on in terms of his leadership and his ability to bring us all together here in this country, so keep your calendars open. There'll be a press release for our Black History Month events, with a kickoff event the first day of the month. Couple other things I'll talk on, touch on, we are a five-oh-one, C-three, so in your year-end giving, please consider us. I know some of you guys sitting up here were on our mailer, and we just sent it out, so you may have received something at the house. We appreciate any support. We definitely have, I would say, additional expenses with obviously additional space and additional staff. In the last four years, we went from a staff of around probably twelve to fifteen to now about twenty-two or twenty-three, and that's really determined on the ratios of trying to make the space safe for our kids and adults. Some of our core values, as you guys may know, affordability, that we believe diversity is important, that we believe creating a safe haven for everybody in the community. And one of the things I think that the Lincoln Center has done is it's been a bridge for years for all different types of people, all socioeconomic statuses, all ethnicities, to come together, and we want to continue to be that bridge. One important part that I'll tell you, and I'm very fortunate to be in the leadership role, is that we know that our growth segment over the last two years really came at a pivotal time, not only in our community, but, you know, throughout our city, and we're very grateful to be in the place that we are today. And we have to thank God for our board, our staff, and we thank the city of Troy for their support as well. So, in my closing words, my encouragement to council and anybody listening would be, please come down. Lincoln Center is a very inviting place. I always talk to our staff in terms of what people need to know is when they come in the center, they find consistency. I know one of the things I try to do is leave my own issues I'm dealing with or stressors at the front door and be able to serve in the role and capacity I've been hired to do, so I think it's a place where people can come and have consistency and see that we care about people. I'd also encourage you, if you have any time, go to our website and check it out, www.lcctroy.org. And I wish everybody a happy holidays. I have brought a program guide here for if anybody's interested in our upcoming programs. And if anybody knows me, I love talking about the Lincoln Center, so you can call me, email me, shoot me a text, stop down, whatever you'd like. So, thanks again for the opportunity, I enjoy doing this, and if you have any questions, I'll stick around here at the end, unless you guys go into executive session, I may go home.
You won't be the only one.
Well, thank you guys for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Does anybody have any questions for Shane?
Please, please.
Any questions, guys?
See you, Nick.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, water, change of motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recess into executive session to confer with legal counsel concerning disputes that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to recess into executive session made by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Counsel will now recess into executive session. I'm not sure how long this will last, and there are just comments at the end, so if you wish to stick around, you're more than welcome to do so. If not, have a safe trip home.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
I can make a motion to go back into regular session?
Second.
It has been moved to return to regular session by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on communications and announcements, Mrs. Knight, do we have any?
No, sir.
Comments or officials, Mayor Otis?
I do have one thing, Bill, just to commemorate your last council meeting. I have a plaque for you.
Oh, thank you.
Want to read this. Presented to William Lutz and grateful appreciation of your dedicated service to the city of Troy, Ohio, and the citizens of this community.